Hello, welcome to the Burlington Progressive Party Town Meeting Day Candidate Forum. I'm Selena Colburn and I'm a former city councillor from Burlington and currently serving in the Vermont House. And I'm really excited to have the opportunity to facilitate this conversation today with some of the folks who are stepping up to run at our upcoming Progressive Caucus. Josh, do you want to say, give a quick shout out about the details of the caucus? And we'll do the same thing at the end, just to make sure I'm not getting anything wrong.
Yes, happy to. So for that, this is our progressive caucus for people seeking progressive forum for people seeking the progressive nomination for city council in Burlington. So that caucus is going to take place on the 18th. And if you haven't registered yet, you can still do so. You can go on our, if you look up Burlington Progressive nomination caucus, you should see it as a Facebook group coming up. So for this forum, we invited anyone who we heard was interested in seeking the progressive nomination at that caucus on Tuesday. The candidates have all agreed to this, this process. So we're going to have 30 second opening statements. And then we're going to have a series of questions that were actually submitted by people seeking the progressive nomination, by people who registered to participate in the progressive caucus. So Selena Colburn and our elections chair, Carter Newser, went through and pulled questions from, from the ones that were submitted and they're going to be, we're going to be asking candidates those questions. And candidates will have one minute to, or two, two minutes to respond to each one of those questions. Afterwards, we're going to do 30 minute closing statements and then we will be all done.
Great. So with that, I think we can get started with opening statements. And Olivia, I'm going to go to you first.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name's Olivia Taylor and I want to be Ward Seven City Councillor. I am currently a member of the Housing Board and the NPA for Wards Four and Seven Steering Committee. I've also lived and worked and rented in Burlington for almost 10 years. I want to be on city council because I believe in affordable housing, building community and supporting local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Bergman, over to you.
It's on mute. Hi, everybody. I'm Jean Bergman. And first I need to thank Max Tracy for a decade of service to Ward Two and the city. We're going to really miss you, Max. I'm excited to be running for Max's seat because I want to use all the experience I've had, not only as a city attorney and a former city councillor for Ward Two, but also as an organizer and an activist to deal with the serious challenges that we face in Burlington. The housing and tax affordability crisis, climate change, systemic racism, economic injustice and public safety transformation. Together, we have started to do, to make fundamental changes and together we can do so much more. And I look forward to being part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe McGee.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Joe McGee. I'm your Ward Three City Councillor representing downtown in the western part of the Old North End. I'm running for a full term on the council to continue the work that I've started over the last few months, whether it's addressing the unfairness of the citywide reappraisal and the property tax system and advocating for harm reduction and meeting the most basic needs of our most vulnerable neighbors. So I look forward to the conversation we're going to have tonight and having a strong slate of candidates going into March.
Thank you, Joe. Ally House.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ally House. I use she/her pronouns. And I'm a Vermont social worker, a public school educator and also student at UVM. And I'm really excited to be seeking the Ward Eight nomination. As an active professional within the community, I have seen the real world implication that local policy has on people's lives. And so my policy priorities include addressing the climate crisis, which I've been active in organizing around improving conditions for renters, long-term residents and college students alike, reducing the cost of living, transforming public safety, improving mental health services, and also holding the University of Vermont accountable for its part in community issues. So yeah, thank you. I look forward to tonight.
Thanks, Ally. This is Zariah.
Hi, everyone. My name is Zariah Hataresheh, her pronouns. And I'm the Ward One City Councillor running for reelection. Really excited to continue some of the work I've been doing on renters' rights, addressing the housing crisis and transforming public safety. And really excited about this new suite of candidates that the progressives have and potentially continuing our work together on, on those issues.
Great. Thank you. So our first question is about housing, which many of you have already talked about as a priority. How will you approach making housing more affordable and accessible in Burlington for working people, for vulnerable folks, for middle income folks and beyond? And Zariah, it goes to you first this time.
Great. So yeah, I think one of the important first steps to working on housing affordability is to work and to get through in the next few months, just cause eviction, just because so many of the other things that we could do, whether those are charter changes or ordinance changes, kind of depends on that basic, right? It's hard to get anything done around affordability or anything else when you can evict someone at any time for no reason. So I think definitely passing that first. And then I think when that gets passed, I won't say if, I'll say when that gets passed. I think moving on to things that directly address affordability. Luckily, also if just cause eviction passes, we've got some things for addressing affordability, like helping with moving costs, things like that, that I think will be a good precedent for helping folks generally. But I think ultimately we'll need to look at another charter change to look at ways to actually control the cost of living for folks.
Great. Thank you. Ally, I can go to you next on this one.
Yeah. So as many of us are familiar with Burlington is experiencing a housing crisis for sure. And the ripple effects are being felt throughout our whole community and also especially in, in my ward, which is largely made up of, of students. And as a renter myself, I understand how affordable housing is out of reach for so many. And the current mayor's solutions have relied almost entirely on outside developers to alleviate this problem. And so while more housing is going to be part of the solution, we have to make sure that we're not gentrifying our city, you know, as, as we're making these decisions. And we also cannot overlook the role that UVM plays in this problem. And so as our city begins renegotiations with the school, I want to fight to ensure that UVM provides more housing for students and that they stop charging above market rates for that housing. And yeah, you know, also the mayor's decision to bulldoze the Sears Lane encampment was pretty horrific and unconscionable. And definitely there, there are certainly problems within social work as an institution. And but as a social worker, I really believe wholeheartedly that shelter is a basic human right. And I want to fight, a fight to ensure that Burlingtonians are able to shelter safely and peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. This is an important question. And you know, it's definitely something that I've been thinking a lot about in the last four months. And certainly as we start up this campaign, you know, in advocating for folks at Sears Lane and the houseless community more broadly. You know, it's pretty clear to me that we need multiple layers to the housing that we have available in the city. We're not going to build our way out of this crisis with market rate housing. We need, you know, better options for folks that find themselves experiencing temporary houselessness and allowing for camping on public lands and investing more in permanently affordable units and really looking at what that definition of affordability is. Because I think with the current inclusionary zoning that we have in the city, it still fails to meet that, that threshold for so many folks. So those are a few things that I hope to look at going forward. And you know, I think we do have an opportunity with the COVID relief money that's coming into the state right now to really make a once in a generation investment to increase our, our housing stock across the state and really make a difference here. So excited to continue that work.
Thank you. Jean.
Boy, what a great group we've got. This is really exciting. So a comprehensive housing policy that stands as an alternative to the mayor's is being framed up in right in front of us by all the people that came before me. So I don't need to, to say anything more than I support all of the pieces that you've already talked about. Maybe I'll just add a little bit. UVM's plan that they released at front of the city council is woefully inadequate. There is a lot of land that they can use and a lot more that they have to do. So we have got to stand much firmer with UVM and getting them to house more of, more students on, on campus. We have a Burlington Housing Authority, which is a public agency, which is an independent municipal corporation that the city of Burlington actually appoints members to their board of. The federal government has walked away from its responsibility to fund affordable housing. But this institution exists and has certain authority that we are, have really not looked at at all. I don't think that we've really looked at a role that BHA could play since the 1980s, when I was serving with Bernie Sanders. So the idea that we could build affordable housing, really affordable housing for working and poor people through the Burlington Housing Authority is something that I think that we need to look at and we need to continue to promote. We haven't added the, the need and responsibility we have for BIPOC ownership. You know, black and brown people in this state, in this city have miniscule homeownership rates. It stems from systemic racism. So part of affordability has to be our commitment to increase to an equitable level the, the opportunity that black and brown folk have to be able to own a home and be able to build that generational wealth. And let me just end by saying that, you know, part of what we need to do is also improve the pathetic condition of housing in Burlington that renters like Ally was, you know, are, are living in. And part of what we do with that relates to how we address climate change. So there is a, an ordinance that's working its way through in terms of weatherization and
Jean, you're, you're
And I'm over. There we go. I could go on obviously for way too long.
Thanks. Olivia, over to you.
Hi. Well, like everyone has said, housing in Burlington is too expensive. I also agree, UVM does not provide adequate housing for students. I'm going to shift to a low hanging fruit since everyone's talking about big picture. I would really like to make the rental process easier for tenants and landlords by streamlining the rental application process in Burlington. I would love to see some, something similar to a common app where you put in information and people can collect the information. My, my landlord actually is a first generation American and I helped him write my lease. So I think there's a lot of things that prevent people from becoming landlords and tenants. And whatever we can do to make that easier for everyone, including streamlining this process is an easy accomplishment I think we could make. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think I got to everyone there. So moving on to our next question. What policies will you advance to ensure that Burlington gets off fossil fuels by 2030? And particularly, what policies do you have in mind for the transportation and, and thermal or heating sector where we know the bulk of the emissions are coming from locally? And this time I'm going to go to you first, Jean.
Will, will get me to be quick on this, by that approach. One of the things we can do is change the Climate Action Plan to include airport aviation emissions. Aviation is a huge fossil fuel burning industry. And right now Burlington does not include their aviation, the emissions of the aviation section in that. Right now, the, the, the airport is proposing a, an expansion that is going to threaten the Chamberlain School neighborhood that has already suffered from the F-35s in past expansion. So we, we actually need to stop that. The city council did a good job last Monday of slowing that train down, but we need to actually work on that more. TDM is Transportation Demand Management. And there were some changes that our own Jack Hanson and Zariah put forward last year. And there are some new changes that I hope that we can, you know, adopt maybe even before this group gets, gets elected and Zariah gets reelected and Joe get reelected so that we can really push that. Because if we're going to be giving developers breaks on parking, then they've got to be part of the solution for how people are going to get from here to there. And I guess that the last piece relates to housing. And I just want to say that there is a new zone, a new housing amendment that should improve weatherization. And it's that kind of work that I will continue to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Ally.
Sure. Um, so yeah, Burlington is definitely at a pivotal moment when it comes to climate solutions. And you know, our electricity sector is 100% renewable, but over 90% of our buildings are still heated and cooled using fossil fuels. And so currently the state legislature, I'm sure you're aware, Selena, is reviewing a charter change that's going to allow potentially Burlington to regulate how, how buildings are heated and like cooled than the systems that they use to do that. And so under this Burlington would potentially be able to create cutting edge policy to move all buildings off of fossil fuels. And so as a city councillor, I want to ensure, you know, if elected, that, that I'll be fighting for this to happen. And also that the transition period to clean energy is decisive, rapid and also equitable for all folks who are living here. And also I just learned this fact the other day. Montreal tripled, tripled the number of people biking in their city just by providing like easier access to bike lanes and providing more infrastructure that promoted biking. And so also taking a look at potentially what could that look like for our city? Yeah, this is an issue that I definitely feel very passionate about. I have met in person with Phil Scott, our governor, related to the, the water crisis that's happening to our neighbors in Bennington, which is very similar to a crisis that's impacted my own family in Wilmington, North Carolina. Some of my extended family. Yeah. So I think now more than ever, we need people in office who are going to remain optimistic about our future and who believe that, that earth and our city is a place worth, worth fighting for. And so I really believe that Burlington can serve as a leader and an example.
Thank you. Olivia.
Hello. So I definitely have a lot of feelings here, so I'm going to try to condense them. I personally am very much a transportation nerd. I wrote my undergrad thesis at UVM on the bus while riding the bus back and forth to Montpelier, where I interned as the Energy and Climate Change Intern at Vtrans. There, I really got very excited about looking at trains and vehicle miles tax, vehicle miles traveled tax versus gas tax. Those are really big picture pieces. I think that the Biden's infrastructure bill has given us money for the train. I think we should be really pushing trains. I have really enjoyed seeing the free bus system throughout COVID. And I would really like to see if that's something we could continue to do. But talking more about climate change itself and what's realistic, I think one of the first steps is to have accessible parks. And part of that is something that I worked on in grad school was edible community gardens. So I want to see gardens that are not controlled by anyone, but just are located in existing parks. And anyone can gather food or like lavender, anything like that from it. Something that really makes people use our parks for, for something that really benefits them and everyone around them. I think that a lot of addressing climate is just really making our wild spaces more accessible. Thank you.
Thank you, Zariah.
Yeah. And to also touch on, those are all amazing answers. I think I'll just try to fill some of the gaps. I think Biden's infrastructure plan, at least the last version of it that I looked at, I think was very much targeted towards carrots and helping some of like, some of the wealthier populations reduce their footprint. And I think then being intentional as a city and making sure that we've got an inclusive package. And so I think things like making sure that we continue the free bus system, like have additional like, and build that out as we need or any other public transit systems. And then I think the second piece to what Jean was talking about is really looking at our housing stock and that, how that ties in with transportation and how we do disincentivize, especially for any new things. Like, you know, just like we couldn't even really build today what we built 50 years ago, based on our zoning, making sure that our zoning is building towards what we want to have in 50 years. So having some of that, like Olivia was talking about, some of that local piece, like do people have like food within walking distance that they feel good about or getting their groceries locally and things like that? So just making sure that our city on a minute scale works for walkability and works for folks who don't own a car and without making it more complicated, more time consuming than if you did own a car. So I think making sure that our incentives are aligned and making sure that that feels equitable, which I think actually making things for walking and biking does help some of the like lower socioeconomic folks in our city as well, some of the working class families.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. You know, I think for me, this question is really, you know, we have to acknowledge the urgency that, that we need to have to address the climate crisis while also making sure that the transition is a just one. And you know, I think, for me, this is a question of collective solutions, mass transit and not sort of taking steps that are, are, are easy to take just because they're maybe less expensive or, you know, don't really get us where we need to be in terms of meeting our climate goals or, you know, forcing individuals to make lifestyle choices. But really sort of making it easier for folks to get around without, without needing an individual automobile. And I think, you know, we're making some progress there. But I think we need more regional and state investment in transportation. I do agree that we need to make our, our public transit, continue to keep it free, but also to make it more convenient so that the bus routes are running so consistently that it makes more sense to, to ride the bus than it does to, to drive or to walk. You know, I think we need to make sure that as we're putting bike lanes in around the city that they're able to be used 12 months out of the year. And, you know, really making sure that we are taking those steps to upgrade our electrical grid and all of our infrastructure around the city so that it is brought into the 21st century because we have so much aging infrastructure that is terribly inefficient. So those are some of the areas that I hope to focus on going forward here.
Great. Thank you. Our next question is, how do you plan to work toward racial equity in Burlington? And what do you see as some next steps in that, in that work? And Joe.
Great. You know, this is a question that I've thought a lot about since my campaign over the summer and before then. You know, what are the areas in Burlington where we can make some pretty immediate changes to, to deliver racial equity? I think Director Green and the RE, yeah, REIB Office have done a pretty great job of making lots of changes to the way the city operates. I think we can go a lot further on the council in terms of making it easier for BIPOC folks to serve on our boards and commissions and our NPAs. I think that is a crucial piece of this that we need to make a lot of effort to address because that's where so many of our decisions are made locally. And if we don't have diverse voices in those rooms, then, then our city isn't really working for everyone who lives here. So that is one particular area where I had said I wanted to focus on in my last campaign. And that is something that I really intend to make a priority going forward.
Thank you. Zariah.
Yeah, I think that a huge part of this is kind of continuing to push some of the changes that especially Taysha Green has been championing. So I think, you know, to the like, and it is usually things that seem pretty basic, like making sure that we do have like pay our boards and commissions so that they can volunteer, things like we have very, very few, like for example, black employees in the city. And now the vast majority of them are employed by the REIB. So I think changing some of our HR practices to make sure that we are recruiting in more diverse ways and ways that supports a more diverse city staff, I think is some of the basic thing. And then I think honestly, supporting some of the, I think especially, you know, some of the BIPOC staff and especially Taysha Green and Karen Durfee who are trying to implement these changes and just continuing to give them the resources that they need and continuing to give them the, the other support that they need in order to make the changes that they're planning on doing anyway. I think there's a lot of work, great work being imagined by those two folks in particular, but also more broadly across the city. And making sure that even once this moment in time feels a little less urgent, that we continue to make those things a priority.
Thank you. Olivia.
Hi, again. So I think I agree with a lot of what has been said. I specifically, the NPAs are a huge thing. As someone who is on it, on the steering committee, it's really hard to get people to, to come to join. I personally am the only woman in my NPA steering committee. I think there's a real lack of diversity in those areas, but part of that is because it's a time commitment. That is something that is not accessible to everyone. I personally, throughout the, the whole pandemic that we're still experiencing, have been in awe of the mutual aid that has come up around the city. And I would really want to see a way to support more community-based projects and programs and things that are, are working because the people who need them are creating them. So I would really like to see more mutual aid support throughout the city. I guess the last thing is really more support for BIPOC owned businesses. I think that we need to really support our locally owned businesses and give them the support that they need to really do well and, and excel in our city. Thank you.
Ally.
Yeah, this is definitely, I'm really glad that this question came up because this is definitely an important thing that we need to be talking about. And I think, I, I think in terms of like, I'm a very systems level thinker. And so, you know, Burlington is definitely part of this, like larger, just like systemic, like like oppression that exists in our country. And I think there have been some really great points made here. Especially like, we have so many wonderful activists and business owners and leaders within our community who you know, are members of the BIPOC community as well and really just like uplifting those voices and making, whether it's positions within our, like within, within like our own government, our own party, like making space there, or whether it's encouraging others to make space and also really deferring to these people who, you know, are experts in this, this subject or, or have that lived experience, I think, is going to be crucial. Yeah, and I really, yeah, I really like Olivia's idea. Like I want to echo that of supporting like BIPOC-owned businesses and also like Zariah and Joe have mentioned, like so many people, I'm still learning about a lot of the people in our community who are really active and like pushing for policy change, but also like I'm, I'm definitely committed to this, this issue and deferring to people who have much more experience than I do in this area.
Great, thank you. Jean, that brings us to you.
So I'm not a surprise that people have said some essential things and I really support them. So let me just sort of go off of what Zariah said in terms of the REIB and echo that, but also add that that means that their strategic plan that they've just been shopping around and talking about needs to have the full support so that they can implement it. That means that the city has a real commitment to putting the money into that. I look to them. I look to the Racial Justice Alliance for for guidance in this. And that means to me, doing things like supporting the Richard Kemp Center. The city has made certain noises regarding that. I think that we need to to follow up on that. And Zariah was critical in the passage of the Public Safety Resolution, and that talked about the reallocation of monies that we've saved into social and racial equity projects. And that does not seem to be happening to an extent. And there may be lots of reasons, but we got to continue to highlight that because this is, you know, paying cops overtime is a poor excuse for making the systemic changes that we need to, to make in terms of public safety in the fullest sense. And that leads to the whole question of the, of economic justice. And so the city has failed in its overarching economic development strategy. We just walked away from that. And a big piece of that is the, the BIPOC empowerment. So I would like to see that. I could go on. Let me just add, let me end by saying that independent control of police is absolutely important and we need to pass that independent control board.
Thank you. All right. So one last question. And is what do you see as the city's continuing role in responding to the COVID-19 pandemic in helping people who've been through the last two years? And what do you think inequitable response looks like? And we will start with Ally this time.
Yeah. So as I mentioned, I have been an educator in, in public schools. I worked full time just over in Colchester School District for a while. And really where my mind goes when I, when I think about the ongoing COVID crisis is, is our schools and our educators and our students and our families. And, you know, recently there's, you know, like, there's going to be a halt to contact tracing that's coming. And I know myself and a lot of my colleagues are feeling incredibly concerned about this. And also I've seen just, you know, students who are having trouble obtaining testing and really so like thinking about how can we continue to make these mitigative like measures available to people in our community and, and also taking into account from like our constituents and also from, you know, professionals who work in healthcare or, you know, education. Like what, what are the barriers? Like what are, you know, what are you all feeling in this? This crisis, like what's needed? I think, yeah, just deferring to people who are, who are really interacting with this on a daily basis. Is certainly my, my strategy. I would love to hear more from, from folks.
Thank you, Olivia.
Sure. I think Burlington as a city really has an obligation to address the misinformation that comes around COVID masks and vaccines. I think we are not a stranger to this. I think Burlington likes to believe that we aren't that way, but as we've seen in the more recent school board meeting, there are a lot of people pushing misinformation. I don't have a magic answer to how to solve that. And I really wish I did, but I think that going forward, we've learned that this pandemic is unfortunately a part of our life. And whatever the city can do to combat misinformation and keep everyone informed would be really great.
Thank you, Zariah.
Yeah, I think, or at least I think and hope that what has come out of the pandemic is a little bit more empathy for where people are at, regardless of that's, you know, being in a financially hard place because you've lost your job, or if that's being, you know, like needing additional mental health care. And so to go back to something that Jean has said, I hope that we take some of the money that we've been using as a city. I mean, there's lots of things I hope would happen at a federal level, but at a local level, I hope we've been, we can take some of the money that we've been using to do command and control and to try to control those situations and rather to have more empathy-based solutions to some of those things. So just having, you know, more services that are really meant to be for folks who aren't doing so well and having that be okay. And having that be something that could happen to anyone providing, providing some of those services on a municipal basis.
Thank you, Jean.
I really liked that last idea that Zariah said, you know, the idea of us being able to somehow have mental health clinics and other ways of getting into to be helping people who are struggling now. It is, is something that we need to be more dynamic and innovative. You know, I just reading the, the CDC is talking about cloth masks not being as effective as N95s. And my wife Wendy Coe made lots of masks. They're great masks. They're really sort of thick, wear them all the time. But if they're not so good, it's like really hard to get them. Perhaps the city could use some of, some monies to facilitate particularly for folks in, in the old North End who don't have the money and elsewhere who don't have the old money, the King Street area to be able to get masks that are hard to come by in the, in the market. If we can pool our resources, that's what public is about. You know, the mask mandate was a good job by the city council and we need to continue to do that. I mean, I, I think the city has actually done a, a pretty good job of being active in this and I want to continue that. So if we need to facilitate more testing sites, that would be helpful. Those are the ideas that I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. And Joe, over to you.
Thanks, Selena. Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, as we're finding out, we can't really vaccinate our way out of this pandemic. And I think it's really unfortunate that the Scott administration didn't take action to provide municipalities all of the tools that could make it easier for, for us to respond to the pandemic, especially this new Omicron variant. So, you know, I will continue to push for more action on a state level. Both, you know, in terms of our ability to respond to the pandemic and the tools that our schools are getting to make parents feel safer about sending their kids into schools, make kids feel safer about attending school. So I think what Ally said there is critical. And what Zariah said was also critical in terms of providing some of these services that we've seen throughout the pandemic are crucial to the health and wellbeing of our people and really expanding the definition of what that looks like. You know, I think it to have hazard pay have lasted for a short time as it did when so many of our workers are still on the front line is really terrible. And I think we need to look at ways that we can provide some more economic relief to low wage workers in Burlington, but across the state. I think we also need to revisit paid family medical leave because I think we've seen, especially with the changing guidance around this new variant that you know, five days might not be enough to quarantine. And if somebody needs to quarantine and they can't work, then their ability to pay their bills becomes really difficult. So I want to see us take action there. There's not a lot that the city can do on some of those larger programs, but if we're vocal about it, I think we can make a lot of those changes that we need.
Thank you so much, everyone. This has been really inspiring to hear all of your ideas and thoughts and, and in the case of our incumbents, your current work on, on some of these issues. I just want to say as, at the state level, I'm excited to partner with you all. I think there's a lot we can do together, starting with getting those just cause and thermal charter changes moving. I believe there's a hearing coming up on the Burlington Charter Changes this coming week in Montpelier. I'm also excited to link arms with you. We have in the legislature, we're going to be looking at a climate action plan that I think is going to ultimately really require that we get more partnership and with and more resources toward municipalities to help us really meet our goals as a state. And on and on from justice reform to also pushing for a stronger, more equitable COVID response across the state. So just really inspiring to hear all your ideas and think about how these progressives and beyond could be working together at the municipal and state levels. And with that, I'm going to ask you all to do just a final closing statement. Any last thoughts you want to share? Anything you want us to know about you? And then this time I'm just going to go in ward order. So Zariah, your first word one.
Yeah, just excited for again, I think same thing that I started with even as excited for this group of people. Just excited for continuing to have that balance on city council and being able to really have some pushback on the way the administration is doing things, but also some really fruitful conversation across the aisle with Democrats and independents and getting some really great policy across. So excited for this group of folks. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ward two, that's Eugene.
Well, this is like part of a stump speech, so it's going to sound like that. We can have an affordable Burlington if we have a city government that works for all and not just the privileged few. But we have much to do. There are powerful elites who do not believe in democracy, that democracy can solve our problems. They believe only in the market. I believe they have failed us. And let me be clear, austerity is not the solution to our affordability crisis. Neither is the trickle down market approach. We need an active and innovative democracy to solve it and to address climate change with the urgency that that demands. All of us are needed to make fundamental change and I've worked with many of you and together we can do so much more. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Selena. Thank you for moderating tonight. And I'm really glad to see such a strong group of potential candidates for, for progressives going into March. I think it's evident by the issues we've discussed here tonight that we as progressives do have a clear view, a vision for what a just and equitable future looks like for Burlington and really advocating for trauma-informed practice and harm reduction and all of the policies that we're, that we're working towards. So I'm looking forward to working with everyone here and everyone in the city to, to make that happen.
Hey, Olivia.
I forgot that we skipped so many words. Again, my name's Olivia Taylor. I want to be Ward seven city councillor because I believe in affordable housing, building community and supporting local businesses. I think I have what it takes because I have personal, professional and academic experience in policy, business development and conflict resolution. I'm super excited to be seeking this nomination. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. And Ally.
Thank you. Thank you all for making this happen. I definitely am feeling very energized by this. And yeah, I just feel, I feel very inspired by you all. And I've also felt inspired as, as a teacher and social worker to run by my students and my neighbors and service users, my colleagues, my friends and just so many others. And I really firmly believe that Burlington can serve as an example when it comes to so many of these important issues. And we need leaders now more than ever who are going to stand for, for what matters. And you know, as, as Helen Keller said, alone, we can do so little, but together we can do so much. And so I'm definitely feeling super energized. And yeah, so again, my name's Ally House and I'm, I'm looking forward to running for Ward eight.
Great. I'm feeling really energized too. This is, this is great. This is just such a great group of people and, and so many great ideas and such commitment around these really important issues. So I just want to close by thanking you all so much for stepping up for the work you're doing and wish you the best of luck as you move into the Progressive Caucus this Tuesday and beyond. Thank you. Josh, do you want to give any closing final reminders about just how to participate in the caucus for folks before we, we sign off?
Sure. Yeah. So just a reminder again, the caucus for online registration for the caucus that closes Monday at midnight, so tomorrow at midnight. And then the caucus is going to take place at 6:00 PM. So on, on Tuesday the 18th. So if you do want to register to participate in the virtual caucus, you have to sign up online. The link is right now floating around on our Facebook page. If you're watching the live stream on our Facebook page, it's also posted in the comments. So you can just register there. If you, for some reason, if you or anyone you know have trouble participating virtually, don't have internet access, maybe there's an English language barrier, something like that. We will also have an in-person option, two in-person options. In fact, the first one is going to take place from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM on Wednesday at our office in the soda plant parking lot. The second option is going to take place from 8:30 AM to 10:30 AM, also at our office and soda plant on Pine Street in Burlington. So feel free to stop by. And then if you do register virtually, we'll send an email out to you on, on Tuesday morning or Monday morning, the 18th, Tuesday, Tuesday, the 18th. You'll get an email with the Zoom link and you'll be invited to participate in that. So thanks so much for every, everyone participating and joining. This has been an awesome, awesome time. I'm really excited. And I hope folks are going to get really involved in this, in this campaign because it's really, really important. The direction our city, you know, is really at stake here. So I'm excited by the strong stated candidates that are interested in the nomination. And I look forward to working with all of you to kind of bring it home in March.